And then there's a bunch of more recent housing legislation. And the state's goal here is for cities to allow for more local housing. And we'll go through each one of these in turn. So beginning with regional housing needs assessment or allocation. As many of you know, it's Rena is essentially a process where every eight years, the state requires each local jurisdiction to zone for a certain number of units, right? So state housing and community development or HCD takes a bunch of demographic data and then assigns a certain number of units to each metropolitan area or each region, whether that's Sacramento region or Bay Area region or Los Angeles. In our case, we are a part of the Association of Bay Area Governments. And we were assigned about 440,000 units as a region. And then that's regional government then sub assigns each city a certain number of units that they have to again zone for within that eight year cycle. So here's just a map showing the different, you know, different requirements of different jurisdictions. So you can see Livermore. In our sixth cycle, the current cycle, we have to, we have zone for about 4,500 units over the next eight years. In comparison to Pleasanton, Pleasanton was required by the state to zone for about 6,000. You can see on the low end Brentwood's about 1,500 and then on the high end, San Francisco has to accommodate another 82,000. And some strategies that we employed to meet the six cycle arena, and we started with the fifth cycle housing element sites. And then we focused on different vacant or underutilized sites. And then a lot of the units that we need to provide were provided in the Isbell neighborhood specific plan. So that was previously zoned. And so we accommodated most units up there in addition to accounting, counting accessory development units that we'll cover as well. So the second grouping of laws is around the housing. So as you're all aware, the, the state requires each local jurisdiction to have a housing element in their general plan. And the state actually has to review and approve this particular element. And ours was recently approved by HCD, adopted by council. So success there. And specifically, the housing element actually has to respond to me. So we have to show in the housing elements, specific sites where we're going to accommodate each of the, the arena numbers, right, for the different affordability levels and the overall quantity of units. We have to show sites where those zoning districts will be located. We have policies in there as well. It's required to, to show development, housing, development of affordable housing and provide services as well. And speaking of kind of the sites list, this is just sort of a snapshot of our housing element sites map. We're zoomed in here on the INSP, Isabelle Neighborhood Specific Plan. Again, area in pink. You can see that's where most of the residential units for the sixth cycle were accommodated. In fact, we didn't have to rezone any other areas in the city to accommodate for the sixth cycle. And more recently, the state's been passing a number of bills. In fact, I think over the last couple of years, it's been over 90 different bills around housing. And so, you know, staff's been trying to keep up. Each session, there's new bills. And so today we wanted to focus on four groups of bills that are, you know, possibly would, you know, impact the city in a major way, or I've had in notoriety in some ways. So we'll start with ADUs or accessory building units. So previously jurisdictions would require some type of use permit for an ADU. Sometimes they're known as granny flats, and that's basically, you know, a small unit often to the rear of a, of a primary residential unit. The state has said through a, a number of different laws that, you know, the city has to provide for and allow for these units ministerially. So we have to approve ADUs. And they've established a number of development standards that are less stringent than what cities would have otherwise had in the past, including with standards. And we get a number of ADU applications every year. And the next law is SB nine or Senate Bill nine. So this effectively prevents cities from zoning or having single family zoning districts. So SB nine requires cities to approve two residential units in every, on every single family zoned parcel ministerially as well. In addition, it requires cities to allow for a ministerial lot split of those, those particular lots irrespective of local standards. And it allows for Senate Bill nine and the ADU legislation to be combined together. So the bottom line there is where there was once one units in single family neighborhoods, there now can, can be four. And the city has to approve that ministerial. To date, we've had two SB nine applications so far. So we also have up here Senate Bill six and Assembly Bill 2011. So similar to what the state's doing in single family districts, they're also doing, doing something similar in the commercial and office zoning districts. So I know we briefed the council recently on this particular issue. And essentially if a particular development, you know, follows the standards of SB six or maybe 2011, namely they provide a certain amount of portable housing, they provide a certain amount of labor agreements. Then they get to build residential on our commercial and office districts. And so again, it kind of takes away that, that local control and they can provide housing on the zone, zones where we've contemplated commercial office. And the fourth group here is SB thirty five or SB three thirty. So these are more of process oriented bills where they restrict the number of hearings that can be had for a particular project. They establish certain timelines by which we have to approve projects. And they also create ministerial pathways for certain types of projects, namely affordable projects with very specific development standards. So taken as a whole, you can see the state has, has removed, you know, some of, of, of sort of local standards in order to try to generate more housing units at the local. So how are we responding to these particular laws? So as we talked about, we're, you know, a, a bunch of units have been proposed up in the INSP. We, this council re-zoned that area. Council's recently approved a number of units in Isabelle Neighborhood Specific Plan. And also in other areas as well, like on Auburn Grove on First Street, Last Road Townhomes. And these are higher density to respond to our arena number. They've got affordable units in there again to respond to the kind of the depth of affordability that's required in addition to amenities on site. And also, you know, the council funded a development code update that will be bringing back the commission and council next year to incorporate all these new state laws into our development code to make sure that, you know, staff and the public we're on the same page and we're implementing state law correctly. With that, that'll pass it off to Steve Stewart playing it.
Thanks Jake. And just as a note, Jake was recently promoted to senior planner. He's now an associate planner. So So I'll go through some of the kind of hierarchy and the land use tools that we use to guide our analyses and, and your decision making ultimately. And just starting at the top with the general plan that establishes policy for land use in Livermore, neighborhood plans are sort of like miniature general plans. They also do policy language. But do you get into more specifics for a, a smaller geographic area? Your Livermore Development Code or zoning implements the general plan. Development agreements are kind of contracts between the city and developers for developing property in particular manners. Your specific plan is a regulatory document that is authorized under state law. Also, we've used that successfully in the past to plan kind of geographic areas to meet a particular vision. I'll cover that. And you have a climate action plan, active transportation plan that guide our analysis and decision making with regards to our climate change element and adaptation resiliency. Active transportation plan for implementing our complete streets policies that's in our general plan to enable mobility for folks of, of all ages and types of transportation. Then design standards and guidelines that have the sort of detail oriented standards and guidelines to, to determine how projects actually, actually look on the ground in a real detailed fashion. So again, the general plans for the constitution or, or blueprint for development and preservation, the city typically covers a 20 to 25 year time period. And it's got to be internally consistent with itself. And then all of the implementing documents and guiding documents that we saw on that list before need to be consistent with the specific plan. On the left are the seven required elements of a general plan required by state law mandated. And then the Livermore General Plan has four additional elements that over time, the community has determined that important for us to look at as we evaluate development opportunities and preservation opportunities. Lasted the general plan update in 2002 through 2004. And as you know, we're, we're in a comprehensive update now. I'll cover it a little bit. The, the purpose of showing this somewhat horrific slide, it's very small and hard to read, is really just in the general plan, we have a planning area that's shown by this, this dark bold line around the city. This is the city generally here in the middle, 580, going through the kind of the upper third. But what that planning area does, and the city does have general plan land use designations out here in the unincorporated area, unincorporated areas of Alameda County. This signals to Alameda County, Dublin, Pleasanton. And again, Alameda County out here, the city does have interest in land use and what occurs out in these areas. Because they, they could potentially impact how the city plans in the future. And so, you know, it goes over to the Dublin sphere of influence here over in Doon Canyon, along El Charro Road, Pleasanton. Kind of includes Ruby Hill actually, down south by Wentie Golf Course, the Veterans Hospital. Moving further east over by the Ruby Hill Golf Course and then up to the county line, Puntacosta County. And you'll see Greenville Road is the existing city boundary there, our sphere of influence just beyond that. The aqueduct kind of zigzags out back and forth there. So the planning areas does go out beyond the aqueduct there to the east. Our general plans arranged in goals, objectives, policies.
I just provided a little bit of color commentary on there. As you said, with the planning area, what that means is we're still an unincorporated county. They don't have to listen to what we have to say, but they do have to listen to us. So it means we have a seat at the table, have a conversation with them. Because we've basically indicated at some point in time, we may be interested in annexing that area to the city. But it means you have a seat at the table. So when planning staff consistently weighs in on projects by the counties that are in the unincorporated county area, because we have an interest based upon our planning area. Sorry, Steve, thank you.
Great, thank you. So our general plans organized in goals, objectives, policies and actions. And the general plan advisory committee has been looking at this arrangement and might simplify this a bit, but basically have broader goals like protecting inequalities of Livermore, an objective, which is a measurable piece to implement that goal, locate development near urban services. I've got a policy that all residential development will be within the urban growth boundary. Then an action at a more finer grain level to maintain a file of available residential properties. That's kind of how the hierarchy of the arrangement of goals and policies are in the general plan. By law, we have to keep a general plan map. This is Portola Avenue here, Livermore Avenue. So you'll see the lucky shopping center here in the neighborhood, commercial zoning district. This sort of reflects our traditional use of colors and depicting land use where you have red as commercial, brown and yellows showing residential. In this case, the blue is the elementary school injunction K two eight. In our general plan also includes both urban growth boundaries. And another important one is the scenic corridor. And you'll see the city is entirely encompassed by the urban growth boundary, but it actually is comprised of two. The north urban growth boundary starts at East Avenue and heads up over to the El Charro area. South Livermore Urban Growth Boundary Initiative adopted by voters encompasses the south. And again, prevents urbanization beyond and extension of services focuses that development inside the city. And this is kind of a result of all three of those policies showing South Livermore and the preservation beyond the urban growth boundary. We have vineyards, open space with the urban suburban edge here out in South Livermore. Up in the, on the North Urban Growth Boundary Initiative with Las Vegas College and Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan area primarily surrounded by grazing and open space lands. Some city owned property that we bought for preservation purposes. And then the scenic corridor here designed to preserve views of the ridge lines and hills from key transportation corridors, 580 for example. And this, this is kind of a casino 580 building here. And if you'll notice driving on that, the roof is sloped. It almost mirrors the view angle that preserves the, the views of the hills and ridges beyond. We are about two years into a comprehensive general plan update. I know both the council and commissioners recently looked at the focus areas. Those are moving forward. We have completed visioning. We have completed our housing element update as Potter mentioned. And out of 15 Alameda County jurisdictions, there are eight that are in compliance and adopted, seven still trying to get there. So Livermore is one of the few and really proud of that. We are currently developing land uses alternatives. And I know the general plan advisory committee has looked at policies and are there any that are outdated and need to be replaced? The format, how does that look? Well, we're intending to have a study that will look at all the aspects of the focus areas that we've seen in terms of fiscal impact analysis, static, social justice and equity. Transportation, hope to have that later this summer. And by the end of the year, early next, have a preferred land use scenario that takes into account both of your respective input, developing those. The graphic depiction of the consumer, again, just showing we're kind of in the early stages of land use policy development. And again, you'll see those in a draft stage before those move further. Our adoption timeline is actually out in the late winter, early spring 2025. Specific plans and neighborhood plans are tools that the city has used with success over time to develop smaller or a pretty significant air regional areas with a particular vision. In the case of South Livermore to promote the wine region. The downtown specific plan to be the heart of the city with a mix of vibrant commercial core surrounded by residential development. The El Charro specific plan primarily a destination retail and service area. Isabel Plan, a complete neighborhood focused around transit. And then our two neighborhood plan areas, the Arroyo Vista Neighborhood Plan and Risa Neighborhood Plan that were both identified in the 2004 general plan update. And you know, the recent neighborhood plan has developed now residential development around the, or just north of the A station there in Vasco. The Arroyo Vista project was purchased by Trumar Homes and they are in second round, I believe, of their subdivision improvement plan checking. So hope to get their permits issued, I'd say within the next six month time frame. And each of those again have a particular vision developments, so policies to drive home that vision and then to design standard and guidelines that really get into the finer grain to make sure that on the ground development reflects those principles and goals. These are some of the fruits of the labor there with the downtown specific and South Livermore, El Charro and Isabel. As I mentioned, the Livermore Development Code, really the zoning code for the city. And its primary purpose is to implement the general plan. So again, general plan policy implemented on the ground through the development code. Also required by state law to have a map, that same geographic area, Portola Avenue, Livermore. The land use is called out and similar colored themes to the general plan map.
See if I can just go back to one slide for a moment. As you can see, as you're drilling deeper from your general plan, it's a very general document. You, there's a variety of ways you can implement that. As you get into your specific plan, your development code, you're becoming more specific in those regulations that need to be implemented. You can change those. You can go back and revisit those. And, but those are what are applied to a particular project. So you've got to apply the specific over the general. So something may be consistent with the general, but if it's not consistent with the specific when it comes to for you, you have to give to the specific. You can change those rules later, but when you've got a project application before you, we get into your different roles, responsibilities between legislative and quasi judicial in a moment. But again, you have to follow the specific we are applying to a particular project.
And implementing the zoning code and the zoning map are, are ways that police power is exercised in the city that Jason and Kim talked about. Each zoning district has a list of, of uses that would be allowed. In this case, this is our suburb, our low density residential zone. So the uses that are primarily permitted shown with a P here are residential uses with a conditional use permit. Typically reviewed by the planning commission to ensure land use compatibility. You can do these other types of uses, animal husbandry if you like. And another variety of uses there. Also includes development standards to govern the location, high bulk of buildings, separation between those, size of yards and parking. And as Mr. Alcala just mentioned, I'll go a bit deeper in this as well. The review authority depend, it depends, and it's also established in our development code with staff having the discretion to look at smaller applications. With a few exceptions, Planning Commission generally looks at more complex projects. And it's generally the decision making body for all conditional use permits. And then the council is the final making decision making body on legislative changes like general plan amendments, rezonings. And anything that might be up there by appeal as well. Commission typically acts in its advisory role for those types of applications. And there's an example of staff level discretion that's identified in the downtown specific plan. So the staff does have the decision making authority for commercial projects of 30,000 square feet or less. Like the Flexa Square Expansion, for example. Also has decision making authority for projects, residential projects of 48, 40 units or less. So anything over those thresholds would go to the planning commission, some cases, city council. And then down into designer view, our planning commission functions and does designer view for our, our larger projects. Your staff will look at the development code and design guidelines and standards to develop the staff analysis that you see there. Help make sure your decisions are fully informed. And this is when you're acting in your adjudicatory, which is a fancy word, quasi judicial, which is also fancy. You're basically judging whether or not the project may is consistent with established standards or law. So there isn't a lot of discretion when you're, as opposed to a legislative general plan amendment or rezoning, where you have broad legislative, broad discretion on whether or not the project is. And our design standards and guidelines again, overall are designed to result in projects on the ground that reflect the high quality and community character that our residents and business owners and landowners have come to expect. And that, you know, respects context, has high quality buildings. And I think one thing that really distinguishes Livermore is the attention to detail that you see that really does create inviting, inclusive spaces. And that has to do with the texture of materials, the variety of colors, the designs, the street lights and the fixtures on the building. Sort of pedestrian scale and how that plays with transportation. So it's not I'm biased, of course, I live here and work here. So I need to do a really nice job. And we've heard that from consultants about just the attention to detail and how that sets the, the, the look and feel of community apart. Well, that'll turn it back over to Mr. Alcala.
Very good, Steve. Thank you. Moving on now to the application in your respective roles, responsibilities between the planning commission and the city council. Excellent. As you mentioned, there are two primary duties, roles, responsibilities you each have. One is legislative, the other is quasi judicial. Legislative is when you're creating laws or setting policies. Those are set by the city council. Planning commission has a role to make recommendations and to form those decisions made by the city council. City council is the one who makes those. You also have quasi judicial, as Steve said, who has the final decision making authority for a particular project that is being processed by the planning. That may be the planning commission on occasion, and on other occasions, maybe the city council. But the role is the same. At that point, when you're exercising quasi judicial authority, your role is to apply the rules and regulations that have been adopted by the city. Again, there may be an opportunity afterwards, but something's not quite working right. When you applied it, it's not achieving your desired goal. But the process is separate from the actual application to a project. You may have a situation, maybe the planning commission, the city council say, this didn't result in the right conclusion we received. You can revisit that. You have to apply that for the next project. You have challenges if you're trying to apply it to a project that's actually going through the pipeline. You would get a run afoul of a due process argument in that case. There are two other types of authority as well that are not necessarily exercised by the PC or by the season. That is your administrator. Some certain acts are administrative, which are we're implementing the rules and regulations. Those are some of your day to day business, primarily for the city council and planning commission will be legislative, quasi judicial. We've also heard another term today. Jake was mentioning ministerial. So what is a ministerial act? Ministerial act is one that does not involve discretion. Ministerial act is if someone shows that they're eligible for an action or receive something from the government. Once they've established that eligibility, they're entitled to receive that. There's no discretion at that point. Now, this is important for these, these groups to understand both the planning commission and city council. And Ken will get into this creating your administrative record. Now legislative act is subject to either reference or set by initiative. What does that mean? A referendum is an opportunity for the community to erase an act taken by the legislative body. So basically undoes that. On the other hand, an initiative is where the public itself creates law. They exercise that discretion and that authority of the city council to create law. The land use management zone. And quasi judicial is the application of those rules. If someone, an action is taken by the planning commission, if someone disagrees, that kid disagrees with the way you apply that. They have to exhaust their administrative remedies. Unlike going to a vote of the people, they have to appeal that decision to the city council. As I mentioned previously, if it's a ministerial or counter level decision by the planning division, that is appealed to the planning commission. Administration, administrative decision may or may not involve administrative appeal, depends on what's at issue. But generally it has a limited opportunity for judicial review as well. Ministerial, there's no real appeal internally, no exhaustion of remedies for ministerial approval. Basically, if someone shows that they're eligible to receive a benefit from the city or receive a governmental action once they establish an eligibility, if the city fails to give that to them, it's a rocket ride straight to the courts. At that point, it is not a, is a traditional mandamus, not your administrative. Administrative mandamus has a record. Traditional mandamus does not. The appellant, the applicant goes to court and says, I had to show four elements in order to receive a right. Here are the four elements I established. I was not granted that right or that obligation, that benefit by the community, straight to court. With that, I want to turn it over back to Paul and Peter Development to walk through some case studies about how that distinction between your legislative authority, which is very broad, and then your quasi judicial, which is narrowly defined by your rules and regulations, how those.
Thanks Jason. I'll handle this section as well. So one of those case studies was the legislative reviews ultimately by the city council establishing law, establishing policymaking law. It was a Sunset Office Park. It was a proposal to convert the old office complex there and open space into a residential development. And that required a general plan amendment to change the general plan land use, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning. And then site designer view, site land designer view for the actual layout of the site. And here, the planning commission acting in its advisory role did determine that the project met the development standards and sort of general plan policy and advised based on a recommendation from the staff as well to recommend the project. The council, looking at a more broader policy perspective, decided to deny the project. And, and, and just kind of looking at a from a broader twice, policy perspective out to the future and the services that are available to those parts of the neighborhood. And chose using their discretion, which is broad in this case, to deny the project. And what you have out there now is a redeveloped well at Sunset that seems to be a thriving destination now of a variety of uses out there. And then a Sunset Senior Housing and Memory Care Facility that has building permits now and we anticipate it will start soon. Another project with real broad discretion because it was legislative. Another project with real broad discretion because it was legislative. Involved changing the general plan and zoning, also included the development agreement between the city and the developer. And then subdivision site designer view was the last in Road Town Home Project. They're just west of Springtown. Town Home Project, but we were able to secure. Some significant community benefits with regional trails that will ultimately connect up over to the. Plac Linus Overpass. We have a major Springtown sewer trunk line replacement project included in that project. And we also were able to negotiate some aesthetic improvements to the. Off-ramp into Springtown with some median planting and landscaping.
Steve, I can expand just for a moment on development agreement. Development agreement is a tool whereby the city council essentially. It's raised to be bound by existing current regulations for a period of time. And with that, the government could allows the city to negotiate compensation. What is the benefit to be received from allowing me to have this surgery, as we've mentioned before, that vesting? For an extended period of time, so that's an extremely powerful tool that this discretion, but you're also giving up substantial rights, which is why there's a quick program over.
Thank you. And then a project that most of you recently reviewed at the commission and council was the Triad East project by Denova Homes. There, you are acting in the quasi judicial. Role where it was already, it was permitted use on the general plan, permitted use under the Isabel neighborhood specific plan. And the role was to look for at the project for consistency with Isabel. Design standards and guidelines. This case, you found that consistent, council ultimately approved it, they are under construction. Right now. And with this, I'll turn it back over to Jason and Paul to go over those of procedure for Jason and Kim.
Thank you, Steve. So this is, this is sort of how you communicate between yourself. As a planning commission, yourself as a city council. The city council has adopted this. City council meeting rules a procedure. And what that does, that governs how they conduct their business amongst themselves, they also direct each of the advisory bodies to follow and conform their rules to the city council. Desire for that particular for the planning commission is your primary way to communicate with the city council is through your minutes. City council, it's confidence minutes from your meetings and they can see as Kim will go through the administrative records. How you made connect those intellectual thoughts together to show. This is your application, here's how you pledge to protect the product to make your findings. So basically showing your work, that is done through the planning commission minutes. The city council will communicate to you both by adopting policy through this meeting here today and through other devices. But one thing that we don't have, we're trying to discourage direct communications from a council member and a planning Christian, planning Christian accounts, particularly on a project basis. You, planning Christian is charged with a role and responsibility for upholding the integrity of the city's codes and regulations and applying them to a project. I will, I can regale you with a number of stories from other organizations where accounts were came to planning practices, I know what you're supposed to do. Here's what I'd like you to do. That places you in a very uncomfortable position, which is trying to serve two masters. One of which is the entire council and your code, as well as the whims of one particular council member. Bad things happen that occurs, so we encourage you to speak as a body. Now there will be points in time where planning mission, you're gonna come across an item and say, this doesn't seem quite right. It's awkward, it doesn't achieve the right goal, there's a variety of ways you can communicate that up to the council. On the three or minutes which they'll read on a project basis. The other one is you can actually sit down with your planning manager, Steve Stewart, and say. We would like an opportunity to review this particular item in your development code. You see this, there is a general plan that has a broad scope of what we can do. But when we apply it, it doesn't seem to achieve that goal. Is there another goal within the same general broad guidance from the general plan that would be better or more effective to achieve that goal? Obviously, there is a balance between how much staff resources are available and any given data to achieve that, that's a conversation you can have with. Another reason we want to avoid city council for having a conversation with an advisory body is exercising undue influence. Just by being present, you can create a shadow, cast a shadow over the application being there. I'm not saying that name is doing the nefarious, there's no, I want to hear, even both my way. But just a mere being presence, that positional power. Can cause a challenge, it also causes a friction amongst you as council members, which is who gets to be present at advisory body? Which is, you get three in the room, a majority, a quorum. At that point, you have a challenge, you have a potential for a random body because they're within your subject by jurisdiction. You as a city council adopted your norms and values to direct those, that type of behavior, which is to extent possible, remove yourself that scenario. So no one of you gets a advantage over another one, you don't exert any more influence than any one other one, and you actually act as a body. With that, I'm going to turn it over to him to start doing a deeper dive in how you create your ministry of record.
Yeah, I'm gonna segue here a little bit, we're gonna go into nexus, we're gonna go back on to the land use authority and regulation a bit. Okay, so what is nexus? You've heard the term, it comes up quite often. The word nexus is, all it means is a connection. Right? And going back to the basic authority for cities to exact fees and dedications for development. Comes from the police power, but as Jason mentioned earlier, the police power has limitations and one of those limits. Is the takings clause of US constitutional, which is made applicable to the states via the Fourteenth Amendment. But basically, the takings clause requires payment of just compensation when a government entity inversely condemns and takes private property for public use. And so basically, in in the context of nexus, you'll hear two cases. That often come up and they are identified here and they're Nolan and Dolan. And basically, the Nolan and Dolan nexus test is used to determine whether an ad hoc fee or dedication imposed on a particular development constitutes taking. And to satisfy Nolan and Dolan, basically you need two criteria. First, you need a direct nexus or a direct connection between the regulatory purpose and the condition imposed. And a rough proportionality between the condition and the projected impact of the development. So what does this rough proportionality test mean? There's really no precise mathematical calculation for it. Basically, though, the city must make an individualized determination that the required condition. Relates both in nature and extent to the impact of the, impact of the proposed development. So oftentimes, the determination whether Nolan and Dolan is satisfied. Or has been satisfied, takes time from staff, whether it's engineering or planning staff. So if you have a request to add a conditional, sorry, an additional condition to a project. It's beneficial to mention that early on in the process and, you know, talk to staff about it. And because, so staff can do the appropriate analysis, analysis to see, do we have that nexus? Do we have that rough proportionality? Because oftentimes, if it comes up during a meeting. You know, we might not have the facts or information or staff to be there to make that determination. Also, when you are making the nexus determination, you want that in your findings. That should be specifically in your findings to bolster your administrative record. So these things all kind of are connected, so it, there's a. You know, a method to the madness of why we require nexus in the administrative record, but that is a brief overview of what nexus actually is. Okay, so next findings. What are findings? Findings basically explain how a city processed evidence presented and reaching its decision. Finding document, the city's thought process. And when are they necessary? Generally, they're necessary in adjudicatory or quasi judicial decisions. So conditional use permits, variances, site plan and design review. Generally, they're not required for legislative acts unless they're specifically called for by state law or a local ordinance. So what is the form? They should be in writing. They're usually in a resolution approving or denying the project. Conclusory findings are not adequate. You need to explain how the agency arrived at its decision. So use of the word because is really helpful. Why did you do it? Because, and so that's always, you know, something I look for, let's see if if the finding has been explained. And and again, findings should be tied to the requirements in city plans, standards or codes. And when, and when a city acts in an adjudicatory capacity, the city must support its findings. And basically. You, you need to know that the findings, they have to support the city's decision, but they're also used by parties who may want to challenge the city's decision, right? They want to know, they are those sufficient to enable. Them to determine whether or not they should challenge the project. Likewise, in the event a challenge occurs, those findings are what the court uses to determine, did the agency act appropriately? So they kind of offer a roadmap, right, for for everyone. And likewise, what is the administrative record?
Kim, please pause her for just a moment. Great good analysis of the findings and components on that. One thing I'm sure that does bridge the intellectual gaps or shows your work and how you got there. Because you're trying to avoid an abuse of discretion standard. So you want to make sure that you just pulled this out of your back pocket, you actually thought about it, here's why you're doing it. You're communicating not only to the applicant and the staff, also to the court. So the court's asking, how do they come up with this decision? Where do they craft this condition for? What were they thinking? But then administrative record. I will share, we had a planning commissioner who was a particularly effective man, said this, she has this for several times and Paul's gonna not as headings to fall asleep. So we had a planning commissioner, her name was Michael Lee. She was outstanding when it came to make the findings. She would have actually articulated. What she thought about the applicant and the project, so if she didn't like the applicant, she didn't like the project, she was gonna say so. But then she would shift, she should say, but that's not why I'm here today. I'm here today somewhere required to make findings. I'm required to make the following four finds, I would walk through and show finding number one. This is my determination, here's why I relied upon those facts to make this determination when this finding was made. Very, very effective. So I want to make sure you do know you have that authority to actually talk to the applicant. But also in your role, it comes down to, do you, can you, do you have the facts, you make the findings?
Sure, and I think it's great because I I've seen recently, funding commission has really gone through that. They have gone through all of the findings and laid them out and showed. You know, how the findings have been satisfied, so that's been very helpful. And going on to administrative record, this slide is actually very good. It's a written record supporting the city's decision, right? It, it should demonstrate why the city's decision was reasonable. What is included in administrative record? A lot of things, right? It can be. Official decision making process, it could be memos, written documents, testimonies, emails, studies, consultant reports. Documents incorporated by reference and any other evidence available. And the important thing to note is that generally, a court is limited to review of the administrative record before the city at the time of decision. So when we are sued on an adjudicatory decision, we are limited to that administrative record. So we want to do our best to make sure everything that we relied on, all the information that we use to. Formulate the decision is included in that administrative record, how you got there. You know, it's definitely a roadmap for the court and it's just, it explains how you got there. And I think findings and administrative record together, it's basically showing your work and how you got there. So it's very important. You know, you'll have a, we've had cases where. Oh gosh, this would have been great to know, but it wasn't in the administrative record, so if it's not in the administrative record. And even though we knew it, but we didn't include it in the record, we cannot use it in court. Very limited instances when you can bring something outside of the limited, outside of the administrative record into court. And judges tend to look unfavorably on it. So we want to make sure our administrative record is thorough. Findings are strong in writing and supported in the research.
And to that point, Kim, several times, you'll read a court opinion which says, from the appellate court saying, there's actually no information in the record to support this decision. That's because it's not administrative record, you may know this, it may be part of your vernacular, maybe part of your common experience here in the city of Livermore. But if you don't mention it, you don't put it in the record, either a document or saying it, it doesn't exist when it comes to judicial review.
So I think that's it for administrative record, we are going on to the California Environmental Quality Act. And we will try to make this as painless as possible. And next slide. And so you, everyone's heard CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. And what are the basic objectives of CEQA? Basically CEQA is the disclosure statute, right? We're disclosing the reasons why the agency approved a project with significant environmental impacts. And CEQA is, the objective is also to avoid or reduce those environmental impacts if it's feasible to do so, and we'll get into more of that later. And next, fostering interagency coordination, if there's another agency, if there's a county or state. Has to be notified for a particular project, it coordinates those agencies, their review of the project. And then finally, that gives a. A platform for the public to participate in a planning process. And so those are the three main objectives. So next slide. Okay, and what is CEQA's environmental mandate? It's important to remember that each public agency shall mitigate or avoid significant impacts on the environment of projects it carries out or accrues. Whenever it's feasible to do so, so CEQA doesn't tell you exactly how to. Protect the environment or to, you know, have the, how to mitigate the impacts, but it tells you that you shall mitigate or avoid if it's feasible. So we have to remember CEQA in that context. Okay, so next, I'd just like to give a brief overview of how we approach CEQA from a project perspective. Any project that comes in, we kind of go through the same criteria. And the first step is, is the action a project under CEQA? And CEQA defines a project as a discretionary action undertaken, supported or authorized by a public agency. That may cause a physical change to the environment. So this can include construction projects, general plan adoption or amendment, ordinance, adoption or land use entitlement. It's fairly broad and one thing you'll notice is it's a discretionary action. So all of the discussion about ministerial actions removes the item from CEQA. When it's ministerial, there is no CEQA, CEQA only applies to discretionary actions. So, for example, when we talked about the ADU legislation and a number of recent laws that were enacted that say ministerial approval. CEQA is gone, so and, you know, one of the goals of that is to expedite the process for those housing developments. And to remove CEQA, so because CEQA tends to take, it it tends to extend the time period for a project. So if a project, I'm sorry, if an action is not a project under CEQA. Then CEQA doesn't apply and we're done at that, at that time when we've determined it's not a project. If an action is a project, the next step is to go to the step number two is the project exempt. And basically, there are three categories of exemptions, the first is statutory exemptions. And these are created by the legislature, they are absolute, they are the best. They are the best defense for a city to use if you're exempting a project, they are the strongest. And examples are one five one eight two and one five one eight three, we've used those in a number of projects for housing developments that have been. That have a specific plan that have, that has been approved. And so those, those are absolute, very defensible, very good to use, those are kind of the hierarchy that's at the top. The next category are categorical exemptions. Basically, the state has designated classes of projects that the state has found to not have significant impacts on the environment and therefore they're exempt from CEQA. I believe there are thirty three designated classes of projects that are exempt. And cities use these often too, existing facilities, minor alterations to existing facilities. Replacement or reconstruction of existing facilities, mild structures, minor alterations to land. These are not absolute. They, they are not absolute and they are subject to exceptions. So the city staff will oftentimes go through the list of exceptions that apply and if any of these exceptions apply, that exemption cannot be used. If the exceptions are not met, then the city can use the exemption. So city often uses categorical exemptions in in several pieces. The third category is the common sense exemption and basically a locally agency may find a project exempt. If it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. So this is kind of a catchall. If none of the statutory exemptions apply or the categorical exemptions, but you know this project does not impact the environment. And it could be an ordinance that that just doesn't impact the environment in any ways, it's more administrative. Then we would claim that, you know, it's, it's part of a common sense exception. And step three, okay, now if an exemption doesn't apply. Your next step is, will the project result in significant environmental impacts? And how do you determine that? How do you find out? You do an initial study. And CEQA is very detailed in terms of what is required for an initial study. They provide a checklist of items that the city should go through to check categories of environmental effects. And so importantly, if there are no environmental impacts, the agency will prepare a negative declaration or mitigate a negative. the agency will prepare a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. A negative declaration is basically a finding of no significant impact. A mitigated negative declaration says mitigation measures can be included to avoid significant impacts. Okay, um now that's if no impacts are found. But if significant impacts are found, uh are found, an agency will prepare a environmental impact report. And you have to understand that the the threshold to prepare an environmental impact report is actually quite low. Basically, an agency must prepare an EIR whenever substantial evidence in the record supports um an argument that a project may have a significant impact on the environment. So there's a statutory mandate that an EIR be prepared for any project that may have a significant impact on the environment. So project is an exempt, and it may cause an 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 effect on the environment. The lead agency must prepare an EIR, and that sets a low threshold um for the preparation of an EIR. Um however, because a um uh it's on the same slide, uh because uh there is a low threshold uh for an EIR, what happens is when you have a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, the the standard to challenge that document is is easily challenged. Okay, so a negative declaration will be invalid if there is substantial evidence in the records supporting a fair argument that the project may have a significant effect on the environment or the agency has failed to undertake a fact-based investigation of the project's potential environmental impact. So what's happened over the years, you used to see negative declarations done a lot more. They have been challenged, and the more they're challenged in court, the courts have thrown them out. And to the point where it's very, it's few and far between where a negative declaration will stand up um in court if it's challenged, because it's so easy to make a fair argument that um that a fair argument that uh the project may have a significant impact. So you don't get that deference that you get if you do an EIR. So remember, it's a low threshold for an EIR, but if you, if you adopt an EIR, the standard of review, you have a a more deferential standard of review, it's a substantial evidence. So either when you uh approve an EIR or adopt an EIR, or you make an exemption determination, you get the substantial evidence um standard of review. And basically, um substantial evidence means enough evidence, relevant information and reasonable information um that can be made to support a conclusion, even if other conclusions can be made to the contrary. So all reasonable doubts are uh resolved in the agency's favor. So you, if you do the EIR, you get the benefit of doing the EIR, right? You get that, um you get a a better standard of review.
So Kim, if I can just punctuate that. So again, it goes back to what we were talking earlier, which is show your decision-making, show your work. An EAR is a comprehensive document that shows your work, how you came to that. A negative declaration, it's available, but it is easily better to side, you don't have as much comprehensive information in the record. It's important to remember, the environmental document is an information box. Did you consider the impacts? So you have more information behind that. Um it's, again, it's not to draw a conclusion other than if you have an impact, but it's an information. Did you think about this when you approved the project? And so then you've satisfied your environmental obligation.
Next slide, please. Okay, so after you've prepared an EIR, uh what are the possible um environmental review that, what is what what is the possible environmental review that can occur? So basically, um um you have two possibilities here. There's a subsequent EIR or supplemental EIR, or there is um an addendum approach. So um once an EIR has been completed, a city may not require a subsequent or supplemental EIR unless you have one of these three circumstances. You have substantial changes are proposed in the project that will require major revisions of the EIR because there are um new significant impacts. Or the second criteria is substantial changes occur in circumstances under which the project is being undertaken that will require major revisions in the EIR involving newer significant impacts. Or there's new information of substantial importance that was not known or could not have been known at the time the EIR was certified as complete and that becomes available. So those are the only times, the only criteria when a subsequent EIR should be um performed. And just so you understand, there there's a difference between subsequent EIR and supplemental. A subsequent EIR is for major or important revisions addressing significant impacts. Supplemental is not as detailed as a subsequent. Supplemental EIR is for minor or limited additions or changes addressing significant significant impacts. And alternatively to these two is the addendum to the AR. And we've done several addendums to the AR. And basically, when you do an addendum, you have minor technical changes uh only to the original EIR. Your analysis and your addendum will show that there are no significant new impacts and that you are only doing um, you know, minor technical changes and those are outlined in the addendum. So um if we could go to the next slide. And when I talked about the initial study um of, in terms of what is done in terms of categories of review, and these are, these are what are considered the the um effects that are considered in in an initial study to determine whether an EIR is required or another form of um environmental review. And um the last thing I'd just like to say in terms of CEQA is understanding the role of the courts in CEQA. CEQA is, as you probably know, we've had a bit of experience here. CEQA is enforced through litigation. So the courts play a major role in interpreting CEQA. And so um, you know, we're guided by what the courts decide in cases involving CEQA. And it's been very um very helpful for us in terms of uh processing CEQA cases here and processing projects through CEQA.
On that note, the court is known for a while as you both the shield, but also the sword. The legislature has taken up several times to have reform to help CEQA accomplish its goal, which is to protect the environment. Not necessarily use as a delay tool, but those legislation, the changes have been slow in coming. It's just for us to understand, we have a duty responsibility, we'll satisfy that. If you do your EIR or supplement, your addendum, does provide you a greater, greater place to fight from and more security that your decision will withstands. I will now turn it over to our city manager, Mariana Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. O'Callaghan. Mayor, City Council, Planning Commissioners, we really appreciate your patience um as we took turns to present um this very long presentation. We're almost at the end. The last section, and this will be brief, has to do with the city's strategic plan. Um I will just take a few moments to uh highlight the work of staff that has gone into developing the city's first comprehensive strategic plan that touches every single department, every single function in the city. Uh what is a strategic plan? A strategic plan is a document, the guiding document that itself draws information from documents such as the general plan, the development code, um any specific uh strategic plans that exist in various departments and consolidates all of this under five pillars. And the pillars uh really have to do with the key aspects of the quality of life here in the city and include the safety, um economic prosperity, uh environmental stewardship, uh a sense of inclusive and inviting spaces and places as well as what's happening behind the scenes, the city that works. And so when you look at our strategic plan that the city council reviewed and approved recently, there's over fifty goals and almost two hundred objectives in the city's strategic plan. Um I mentioned that for context, only a few of those goals and objectives will apply to the work that the planning commission is doing. And uh those goals and objectives will really guide your work plan over the next three, five years. Because our strategic plan is designed uh with the five-year horizon in mind. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Spence for a very quick overview of relevant goals and objectives applicable to CEQA. And we're almost done.
All right, excuse me, thank you. So this is not exhaustive, but this is just a few examples. So we have uh goal number, sorry, pillar number one, a safe community that thrives. And example here is goal number nine, we're talking about facilitating new residential development consistent with the city's general plan. The objectives shown here are around ensuring consistency with the city's codes and plan requirements and facilitating high-quality development. Also, within pillar number one, we have goal fourteen, updating development standards, codes and ordinances. Jason talked about this earlier. And uh we have several examples here as well, uh updating to ensure consistency between related codes and ordinances. Anytime you adopt a general plan, update, you have to then go back and update your other codes on system, make sure they're all consistent. So that's something we'll be working on, post general plan update. Uh updates to the city standards to uh recognize changes in state law, Jake talked about that earlier. Changes to fences and walls, uh city's noise ordinance. And so we go through and and look at uh where ordinance updates needed and we'll add them to our objectives over time. Next. Uh this is goal number two, economy that prospers. And we have uh implemented the Isabel neighborhood specific plan. Again, several examples here of working with property owners, number one. Ensuring developers comply with specific plan requirements, two. And monitoring implementation, uh when the specific plan was adopted, the council asked us to come back on a regular basis and update them on the uh progress in implementing the plan. And uh so we'll be doing that over time. Next. Also, under economy that prospers, we have facilitating development of commercial and industrial projects that provide high-quality jobs and support a diverse local economy. So this is um working in tandem with our economic development team. And we have an example here of working with property owners and developers to facilitate uh projects throughout the city. Next. This is goal number four, uh inclusion and inviting spaces and places. Uh implementing the downtown specific plan. And again, we have four examples, I won't go through them in detail, but we have a number of projects that are focused on implementing your downtown specific plan. And the council's uh approved downtown improvement plan for city-owned properties. Next. And last but not least, we have uh continued to complete the general plan update. Again, uh we're working on that over the next couple of years. We're also working on an environmental impact report, as Kim actually spoke about. Uh we're working with a consultant, working with general plan advisory committee. And we'll be bringing this back to both the planning commission and the city council as we move forward. That concludes our presentation. And did you want to add anything else?
I was just gonna go to the same to the discussion questions. So very good, so this is a workshop, as you see, we barely scratched the surface on land use planning in this zone. But we wanted to introduce these concepts to you. Uh and turn it over to you, if you have any questions about what you've heard today, if we've inquired about or have a burning question about doing your job or how you interact with each other, this is an opportunity to do that. I do want to set the table here, though. Um to ensure we don't violate due process, if there's an application currently, I'm making its way to you for a decision. On top of the table today, if I'm discussing, um if there's something that may be finding its way back to you through your decision-making process, that may be in the subject litigation. Again, we're not going to discuss that today, because again, you'll be exercising your discretion at some point in the future when it comes to you. So to maintain due process, we're not gonna have uh discuss those today on a specific basis. If you have general questions, for yours, Mr. Merritt, turn it over to you consulting.
Wow, thank you very much, uh very comprehensive uh and a tremendous amount of information. That's uh, uh thank you very much for for putting all that together. Tremendous effort, a lot of information to uh to distill down. True, so let me just open it up here. Let's start with the uh planning commission. Uh are there any, you know, questions, clarifications uh that you have to start with? And then we'll bring it back to the council for for questions.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I'd like to ask some questions about slide number twenty-three. This has to do with the general plan. So looking at all these elements, I mean, Mr. Stewart, you kind of alluded to. Would we expect to see each one of these one at a time over the next two years? We've dealt with a few of them already, right? And just trying to anticipate the next two years, how that would look and how the the G-PAC that's in with that, and you could give us an idea.
I don't have an exact answer for you, Chair Leary, but um we we can uh kind of break it into smaller pieces like, for example, some that may uh go hand in hand are land use circulation. And some can be paired uh together. There may be even be more elements here that come out of this. So I will have to see kind of where the advisory committee goes and I kind of new elements they might want to add to.
And I would add, just generally, no, we won't bring these to you individually, but we'll bring them to you, mostly in large groups.
Second question about this slide is, could you describe a little bit more about the legislative versus quasi-judicial role for the planning commission as it applies to these? When we're reviewing them?
Certainly. This is not very, certainly, so when you're adopting your general plan, that is when you're exercising your legislative authority. So you're creating the policy, you're creating the law. The laws are your development code that implement this, but the policy document is your general plan. So you have a broad uh broad discretion here, it's guided by the state, the state does have it's some on the scale, it says you must consider this, you must incorporate your arena numbers, so they're guiding uh your hand along. They've set these required elements and what they must contain. So with that, your discretion is not unvetted, it's being guided. But you have discretion within that broad discretion in terms of how you're going to satisfy. Your quasi-judicial, you comes in afterwards, we actually applying that, which comes in a number of forms. Your first step, those, again, legislator. So you're going to adopt your general plan, you're going to return with that, which is, what are your policies that you're going to adopt subsequently to implement your general plan? But your development code, you're going to adopt subsequently to implement your general plan. Those two are legislative acts. Your policies, practices, procedures, how are you going to have your design standards? Those are, again, following along this legislative. Where it comes quasi-judicial is when you actually apply that to a project. You have an application before you, someone says, ah, consistent with your general plan, your specific plan, your development code, I would like to take advantage of one of those land uses I'm applying to as a city. And then you take those standards, you apply that to a particular project and the facts.
What's one brief thing to add? For the legislative component, you're always making a recommendation to council, council research, legislative authority itself. Quasi-judicial, you may either be making a recommendation or even the final decision.
As far as making a legislative recommendation, I know two years ago, we had those five goals, remember the five goals and policies that city council provided? Are those still in play? Are those different now?
So I think what you're referring to is the five priorities that the the city council previously established. So this year, we placed those priorities with a comprehensive strategic plan. And the idea is to really focus on goals for each department. So there's really nothing that's more or less important when it comes to uh departmental functions and operations and services. So everything in the strategic plan is going to be implemented. And uh we need to make sure that there are resources to implement it. So hopefully, the strategic plan, as I mentioned, will guide as a framework for the work plan for the planning commission.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the uh planning commission?
I, since we're talking about the strategic plan, I just wanted to uh, a great document, it's very, very thorough. But I was wondering, as time goes on and we might see uh need for maybe some changes within it, um is this a document that can be changed kind of midstream? Obviously, you wouldn't want to do wholesale changes, but like small changes.
The answer is yes. Uh as a matter of fact, as we're looking internally to implement the strategic plan and we're looking at specific projects and tasks for each employee, because now everyone is contributing to the strategic plan, we're noticing that there are certain objectives and goals that need tweaking, that we missed a few things. So if the commission has any ideas as you look at the work plan and look at the projects to tweak the strategic plan, we're open to those ideas. And of course, you need city council as well. We're planning to be before the city council every six months with the status update on the implementation of the strategic plan. And so every six months, we'll have an opportunity to tweak goals, objectives, to add to, delete things, and so on.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you all, um just, I have a dozen questions that I'm going to try and boil down to the most nonspecific ones I can possibly ask. And I'll rely on our city attorney to be like, nope, can't comment on that. And I'll rely on our city attorney to be like, nope, can't comment on that. So uh, I just also want to just take the opportunity to offer feedback. This has been an amazing collaborative work on on behalf of city staff, and I have never been anything but duly impressed with both the quality context and also uh vociferous amount of information we receive on planning. And and that's actually, I mean that as a compliment, like I love the six hundred page notes because they actually make our jobs bang on easy based on the parameters of what we are needed to do. Um, the questions I have kind of in order, um, one of the things that was in I I think it's okay to talk about this now, but it wasn't in this presentation, but we also have an airport. Uh, which is a little bit of a sticky wicket for all communities that have them. And I'm just curious how some of the principles that you were discussing when it comes to both state and federal regulation as mid ministerial regulation apply to something like that versus the kind of things that I know we're going to be reviewing both on planning and eventually at council in the next few years regarding the development of the land at the airport.
Certainly, I'll take a shot at this. What you have is a little bit of the supremacy clause.
Yep.
You have to deal with the federal government who adopts standards and regulations for an airport. So where they've occupied that field, the city has them the jurisdiction, a little discretion. That being said, it does have certain things that it can exercise out there at the airport. And that's when we work with our land use planning and zoning and development code. Those still have effectiveness out there, but as far as what you heard earlier with the discussion of the recently adopted city council um leasing policy and development, that was for how you start to think about a project. Which is, how do you entertain those things when someone comes to your door and says, I'd like to consider a project? That's separate from the actual development process that becomes before you for a project. But this is, do you want to do business with them? We have to, with our airport brand assurances, we have to entertain certain things. That's the first step. As part of that process, you coordinate with that when you have your negotiating group with them, actually go through that process. Next up is to go to you as planning commission, maybe file decision-making authority, most likely recommending a decision to the city council to apply your land. But it is a um conscientious effort to go through to figure out what's yours, mine, and ours between us and the federal government.
Thank you. Um, I, some of these I'm also asking because I know this is public record and I hope for the folks paying attention, it would be edifying. Um, one of the other questions I did have that's specific to our work together and it's bound up in the conditions for triggering an addendum E I R. And that is knowing that we're sitting on essentially a loaning land and and there are a number of maps of known cultural sites around both Alameda County and also impacting the city of Livermore where that would come into play if somebody were ever to do something with them. Uh, the question I have is, this occasionally happens in older cities, but I could also imagine it here. And that is if somebody's doing digging on a project or if somebody starts building and suddenly it's like, oh, Christy, we've discovered a bunch of artifacts. We've discovered remains. We've discovered something. Does that trigger a draft or an addendum E I R in that circumstance? Or is it just something where we suddenly have to stop all work and and restart?
I'll turn it over to Kim, Steve, Paul for the more specific answer. But we did talk about that you have to coordinate with your responsive agencies or responsible agencies in the process that is incorporated into it and dealing with indigenous populations as part of that process. With that, I think I prepped it for the response from staff.
Sure. And at a project level, and you'll see these in conditions of approval as well, um, but in the environmental documents, we will have either mitigation measures or language in there that spells out if, first of all, you do, um, you know, pre-construction surveys. Kind of record searches, if during construction you encounter remains or artifacts, then uh the and training occurs to the crews before this happens too, uh, before the job starts. They have to notify uh city inspector, we have to uh get a cultural uh or expert on uh the site. Right? Uh, and determine, trying to determine the significance of those relics or remains and how best to treat them. And we did encounter some of those in the L. Charles specific plant construction and most, mostly along the creek, creek beds. Uh, and we're able to um work with the experts in those cases and kind of figure out how to address those artifacts. Um, Mr. Potter did oversee our um update our historic resources inventory and also our context statement, which has a little which has more language in uh now how to to um identify and work with our um ancestors. Folks who are here long before anyone.
Yeah, so that's a great question. There's a couple of different layers, basically. So you know, when the city is undertaking, you know, environmental document for for amending, you know, a specific plan in a given area. State law does require us to reach out to the Native American tribes or indigenous populations. Um, and so uh we send letters out to the known tribes in the area and they have an opportunity to comment on the project. And so if the property is within, you know, a sacred homeland or um, you know, has potential for artifact. Uh, they have the opportunity to sit down with the city to potentially modify the project um in order to protect those those resources. One of the challenges is, you know, we actually, you know, we can't uh make some of these maps public as to where these sites are, right? To protect the resources. Um, but that's the first layer. Uh, we would contact the tribes and they would work with us to make sure that we respect the property. The second layer is often you'll see in, you know, P I Rs environmental documents, a standard condition or standard mitigation rather, that if you encounter any remains, then you stop all work and then you contact, you know, often an archaeologist or and or the tribe. Um, and so that is fairly typical. So if that were to happen, we'd follow our environmental document, follow the mitigation measure, stop all work and then contact tribes and and or our guilt, or our guilt just.
Thank you.
Um, I would just add that it's generally in the E I R, not in the addendum that you're gonna encounter that, right? Because the E I R will lay out the the provision that Jake just talked about. And so it's not that the addendum will address it, the E I R really addressed that. And then it has a direction on how you should respond if that's uncovered.
Got it. So there's both processes in place for known, knowns, and then unknown.
Yes.
Folks, that's super helpful. Uh, I'm gonna ask my third question and then stop. Post family in Russia used to say, God loves threes. So the the question I have is more general to the work of the staff when it gets to planning and ultimately if it gets appealed to um city council, and that is when there are improvement, like community improvement requests on the land that is part of a project, is that frequently something that staff helps determine? Or are there sort of, what are those sort of shaping guidelines behind those that I think would be edifying for folks to know? Because I think when we get to these projects, by the time they hit planning, you know, there's always that coordinated dance of like, and the developer has put in these community improvement things and they're going to mitigate this this way and so forth. But I'm just curious, what shapes those initial requests? And and what documents and what priorities shape those when they come to our desks?
Sure. And and a lot of those are in general plan, for example, active transportation plan when it comes to trail improvements or mobility, uh, or climate action uh plan. So uh, as staff and the commission and council have experience working together, we we know what aspects of those three guiding documents are important. Because the communities express that, you have expressed that in your decision-making. So we will uh do our best to rely on general plan and our development standards to uh kind of get a project ready for your consideration and and have, you know, appropriate uh bicycle lane uh improvements, for example, or pedestrian path connections or um solar capabilities and things. So it's it's sort of a work in progress, but we will um again, work with a builder, the project outlet to get those in shape to the best of our abilities. So it's ready for your review.
And then just to follow along with what Steve mentioned, you have your project impacts and you have a guiding plan of how you address those particular impacts. There's one other thing you mentioned, which is amenities. How do you get an amenity safe like a development agreement? That is a policy document that goes to the city council. That's their decision. They give guidance to staff, which is if you have this, here's a nexus from these impacts that you can address through imposition of conditions. There's something that may not be a direct nexus. You can still, if you have a development agreement, you can negotiate uh compensation or considerations to the city for tying its hands in the future, first development code. So that becomes the city council, which is what do they need to see in order to give them that benefit?
We also, we also look at uh components that are related to the project impacts themselves that may benefit the neighborhood surrounding the project or may benefit the project site itself. A trail is a typical example.
I, thank you. I just think that's really important to, for for the public to understand because I think when we get these things, sometimes there's a lot of focus on what's wrong with them and you know, community improvements are something that are very right. And I think it's edifying for folks to know that you're working with the same set of documents we are. You're looking at priorities that the communities articulated and there are always trade-offs. So thank you and thank you all.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, bring back the council, customer Carly.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, I agree. It's very comprehensive. I appreciate the material I have. To Mr. Collins' point about doing my job better, this is a question about findings and administrative record. One of the issues for the heat project, the S L D was that um can I ask this?
So well, we'll see how far you go.
So one of the I mean, it started as a secret lawsuit and then it ended up with design standards. And I think there's, at least from what I understood from our point of view, was there's a lot of discretion given to a city council in terms of making interpretation of what those designs standards are. The question to you is, did we drop the ball in terms of not being more explicit in some of the things that were heard you know, admittedly, there's some very clever attorneys out there that will sort of pick at anything, right? But I mean, is there something that we should, that I should learn in terms of being more specific about my thought process and these kinds of decisions?
So I think this goes to the development of your administrative record. Um, again, the city council has a great deal of discretion when interpreting and applying its standards. It can vary based on what that standard is, but generally, there's a deferential standard granted to the city council. When you're coming up with something and you're making the decision, there's the trade-off between how much information is necessary for the record to connect your dots. What we do as as far as staff is we create the staff report to you. We highlight the information to help you make that decision, which is why there's a recommended action. There should be adequate information in that staff report presentation to allow you to make that determination. So that that's what staff presents to you. If you go for the conditional approval or something that's not within that, definitely makes sense to give more detail, explain your thought process, which is why we do encourage the planning commission and the city council. When you have information that you've come across outside of your chairs presented to you. Uh, I had a conversation, uh, I have some personal knowledge articulated within the records so that your fellow planning commissioners and city councilmen benefit from that knowledge. What we have before you in the court, again, you have some very conscious attorneys who are nitpicking, trying to find false where there was none. Um, your record was obviously adequate to the standard script. So you had enough information record, but you can always do more.
And one more that you may not want to answer, but um we're undergoing a new, and I'm not sure whether it's supplemental E I R for Garrett, is that supplemental or subsequent?
Term as a revised, recirculated final environment with back to report.
Okay, because I was gonna ask you, which of the three criteria was the reason for doing it?
So we have a little bit allowed to here because obviously it is part of the community conversation right now. So in the original litigation, the trial court, it was understood by the appellate court, found that the environmental impact report and the environmental documentation was adequate to address the impacts from the project. The decision by the court says, ah, but you did not consider adequately a no project alternative, which was the potential to acquire the property using specific funds.
Right.
So that was the one defect that was identified. That's what stats went through and processed in that project. But I don't want to go too deep into that because it has to go through its process, but that is what is occurring right now.
So what did you see? Would you call it?
So revised, recirculated final environmental impact report.
Okay.
So it will rely on the previous environmental impact report, but be updated uh with the new information.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
What's your kick?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions about um findings and best practices and if it's ever more important to make a finding for a certain type of vote or another. Um, my example would be, so um the staff recommends a project for us. Uh, the findings are in the staff report because you've made the recommendation. We all vote yes and we say nothing about it. The findings are in the staff report. If uh the staff makes a recommendation and we all vote no and say something about it, we have no findings about why we said no, correct?
Correct. And that's why we do recommend if you as the council or you as a planning commissioner disagree with information that's been sent to you. You say this information is inadequate, you make the findings, articulate your reasons why. I can't make this findings because I need more information on fill in the blank. Explain why that help will be helpful to you. On occasions, that will happen. You'll have an opinion, a look at the information, say, I want more information on X. It may be that there's a a lack of information that you need or to make a decision on that. When you have a conversation with the planning staff to say, this is something I think you need to develop further so they can make this one. I don't think you basically connected the dots for me, bridge that intellectual gap between information before me and that conclusion from finding, I need to show what that is. So if that's missing, definitely, you have the conversation with staff as part of the meeting. Um, if you can't make it, it does make sense to explain why. To show that you have the benefit of pre-administerative record and sharing that with your fellow planning commissioners or councilmen. They may may find that you have brothers or sisters in arms.
Sure. Um, uh, I just want to clarify that whether you decide that you can make the finding or not, uh, does is the importance of creating an administrative record any different? Whether it's a one no for yes, or a three yes to no, or is it always important to state your reason for your vote?
I think it's always a you're, the more comprehensive information you have in your administrative record, the better. Uh, we set it up as far as staff to say move stats recommendations. So it is succinct, it's encapsulated. And when we go through our review through our city trans office, make sure hopefully it withstands scrutiny. So that's the perspective we give to it. But if you want to add more information to explain your thought process, you can. Obviously, you'll know when you have um a matter of public controversy. Um, this important one at that one to sharpen your pencil. Not sure I was cautious.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I also had question, you could apply for you, I think inadvertently. Do we, do we like to go over it or should we?
I didn't skip over, but I did put part of my conversation in there with regard to forty-eight. But just to go through with forty-eight, again, you have, the city council creates law and policy. You are the decision-making body. You have a conversation with planning um commission to ask them to write inputs. Can you as a planning commission to provide information up to the city council where you'd like them to give you the authority to study some particular area? So it's either by council direction, participation, or through the planning commission to request city council. Um, when it gets down to, we're applying, applying your regulations to legislative act. When you're adopting regulations, you're applying it, you are um approval identified back based reasons supported by the evidence. So this is what Kim was getting into your administrative record, which is the bridge that intellectual gap, show your findings. Show how you, show your work, how you got from where you are to where your approval came. Correct. So we actually, that's part of your relationship through your city council, meeting rules of procedure. The city council is to provide guidance to advisory bodies. Um, planning commission, you have a particularly heavy schedule. So you have a very limited amount of free time. There's so few money to spend some time, but should you want to explore that opportunity, you have the ability to sit down with the planning manager who's your V A's on. To see if the project is within the allocation of time available to them on a given year. And if beyond that, you can then request council to give you authorization to work with staff on something broader that requires council, um, difference.
And, and I just wanted to, uh, reiterate again with the, it's finding issue that, uh, I, uh. There have been problems in the past with a no vote without finding. Uh, and it's really difficult, uh, council member to understand why that no vote was, a, a no on a recommendation without the finding. So, um, you know, you're not gonna hurt our feelings, but feeling it's why you voted no, that's actually really hopeful. Um, yeah, so, um, another thing I just wanted to take, uh, some time and appreciate, um. The amount of information and the amount of work and, uh, the shared work. I think it was really important for us to see the different levels of expertise that you all have, uh, the community to see that. Um, and I, I also just wanted to point out that, um, I recently learned, but we are the only, uh, seems like the only city in the tri valley updating our general plan on a, on a generational basis, which I believe it should be. Um, that's a personal opinion and, um, that most cities don't have these, uh, strategic plans. And the cities that do usually have a consultant do it, which is totally necessary and fine a lot of times for staff resources. Um, but I can feel your fingerprints on it. And I think that's important because I personally believe you have a little bit more skin in the game to, um. To do the work because you believe in the work because it helps, um, shape it. So, uh, just thanks again, seeing it again, um, was just reminded me that I should say that again. So, um, that, those are the questions that, that I had and, um.
Because we're very interested, questions, comments?
Um, I appreciate, I appreciate what you've done and I'd like to brief things to add earlier today and give you a little head start. And, you know, I appreciate your questions from the planning commission, just so have fun.
Okay, well, thanks. Um, I'm gonna allow me to get down to the weeds just for a moment. And then I'll go to a little more overarching, but quest, uh, slide twenty four. What is that little pan handle on the east? It's just so random that it just, just sticking out there by itself. It's, was there some sort of historical, is there a ranch or something that was out there that?
They are, they're, they were actually, uh, two properties, uh, that were. Actually amended by the county to put them in the vineyard area of the South River Valley area plan.
That was for the.
Right, okay, so we modified our planning area, like those, inclusion of those properties.
Okay, because it looks so obvious that, you know, when you see these sorts of things, I've seen, you know, gerrymandering does that. You know, they're trying to, you get that, that, that one district into, uh, to tip it. Okay, great, thank you. Um, well, this has been great. Uh, thank you so much. Being part of the, the previous, uh, world and then coming into this one. Uh, I remember every two years we would do the goals and priorities. Uh, and to be honest, they never really changed. Yeah, we said the downtown is important, but, you know, public safety is always number one. And just because we're gonna focus the downtown doesn't mean they're going to ignore public safety or we're gonna ignore economic development. So really having these, these overarching, uh, this strategic plan is so important. And what I really appreciate is every time I look at an agenda now, it has, this is the pillar that we are looking at. This is the what, what we're, a, a community that thrives. When that's there, it, it really helps focus when we're looking at what that nexus is. And what the justification is, what the administrative record is to support our decisions. Uh, that is so important because it helps focus, uh, what we're actually doing. And then thank you for that. And to the planning commission, oh my goodness, thank you so much for the work that all of you do. Because you, you help you, I always read the notes because I, I appreciate your perspective. And the way, the way that all of you are looking at this in a slightly different way. Uh, and it helps inform my decisions and I sincerely, uh, appreciate that. And I think one of the differences, and I, I've said this many, many times. Uh, but the planning commission decides whether it can be built, whether it meets the general plan, the development code and all of those other things that factor in. So it's so important. And then it comes to the city council and the city council decides whether or not it should be built. And with that, I, pulling up slide forty three, uh, you guys brought up one of the, uh, uh, one of the great ugly battles. Uh, and I have the stars to prove it. Uh, sensitive office plaza, pardon, that was one of the very rare times where it came to the city council and the planning commission. Voted to, to approve it. Uh, and the city council says, oh, heck no. Uh, and it was, it was, uh, there's a lot of discussion on that. And I guess one of the things to justify that decision was, uh. I had Chris Trubridge in my office, uh, from Sunset Development Company and he said, you know what? We're going to present the community with, with a bunch of plans they're gonna hate. And we're gonna go with the one they hate the least. Wow, oddly, could you have maybe tried for something that they might like? Uh, but it, 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 it met the, the, uh, uh, discretion area, things that this is, this is what they could get away with. And at first, at first they came into the city, uh, to the neighborhood and said, we're gonna put up three hundred affordable, the three hundred low income housing units here on that site. And the idea was, was to horrify the community into accepting the next thing. We're, this, this project is so bad, three hundred low income units. Uh, and then they said, they had a couple of other iterations and they finally came back and said, well, you know what? We were only kidding. We're gonna put in forty four town homes and thirty two, uh, single family units. And they had so poisoned the well that the community just says, oh, no, we're gonna fight everything tooth and nail. And, and that's what was dropped into the lap of the council. And it was the first time ever where they were going to, uh, rezone open space. And we had never done that before to rezone open space for residential. And it really set up this, this, uh, uh, this precedent that was, was just too much for the council to swallow. It's no, we just can't do this. Um, so. If and when there.
Well, I'm just gonna follow along on that. So the reason why you have the, or you recall this, Mr. Mayor, is because it was the general plan amendments, which is firmly within your discretion, which was a change from a commercial retail to residential. Which allowed the city council to have that discretion, that decision, so it's a legislative act. It wasn't, the planning commission made a recommendation on the legislative act and actually applied those new potential rules to the project, our recommendation to approve. But since it did involve legislative act, the city council, they're able to say, no, we did not want to change the rules to accept this project because it didn't, didn't comport with their vision for the community.
And, and there again, it comes down to what's in the best interest of the community, whether it can be done versus whether it should be done. And that's where the council made the decision, no, it, it shouldn't be done. Um, so, um, sincerely appreciate the, uh, the tremendous work that has gone into this. And that's in the, going from the, uh, the goals and priorities to strategic plan. I think that's, uh, that's gonna be very helpful as we start to create these administrative records to. Give the community an understanding of, of why we do what we do. Uh, in building upon what the planning commission does, uh, I think we just have a fantastic team here that we continue to work together to keep Livermore, um, a, a great community that it is. And thank you for all of you that, uh, the work that you've done. Uh. This is, this is, this is remarkable and sincerely appreciate that. Uh, with that.
Can I help you, uh, amend your administrative record, John? John, John and the council wasn't horrified by three hundred affordable units that you, there would be a function that the community would be horrified by three hundred affordable units?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanna, I don't want someone to say, John Marshon said.
Not even for.
Sure, but we would never.
Create the concept that this was going to be.
Trying to help you fix your administrative record, John. So.
No, 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 it's, you had to be there, you had to.
But it's just.
You had to be there. So, uh, with that.
The thing to take away from that, um, just to punctuate this conversation, was that the developer was out there stirring controversy within the community, um, trying to, um. Have a situation where they were being damned, saying praise, make sure, uh, allowing, uh, different projects than the one that actually went with. This is something to be aware that happens with the project going forward. Um, and we need to be mindful of that when we're doing our duty of applying the rules and regulations. So some people may be trying to create controversy when this solely for a long time.
This was my neighborhood and these were my neighbors. So it, it did get very, very ugly and it was, it was specifically designed just to do that, to make it as ugly and controversial as possible. So, um, with that, thank you for.
Yeah.
Lifting all of this up, I said, the, uh, going from goals and priorities to a strategic plan. Uh, I think that was, that's a remarkable change and it helps refocus, uh, and working on those administrative records. Uh, the justification why we do what we do. Uh, and that's to keep Livermore a great place to live, work and play. So thank you for all of your contributions. I, I do look for all of those. I, I sincerely appreciate your administrative record. It helps us at the council make decisions. Uh, and with that, uh, we will adjourn to, uh, the, uh, regular meeting of the twenty fourth of July. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Meeting is adjourned.